Exceptions made. I'd like to introduce Mr. Jeff Dorner, Mr. Jim Hammer. Jeff's the representative of J and L Steel Rectors, Jim Hammer is the engineer, project engineer from Passy Engineering. Let them review the project with you. Staff recommends this approval.
Thank you, Danny.
Yes.
It sounded like it.
Yes. I don't know if our systems, you know, should be on.
Okay. Members of the council and members of the commission, thank you for having us in tonight and reviewing our project. We're here tonight to request final plan approval and common council approval for our project. Just real briefly, I'll spend a moment or two introducing the project for those that haven't had a chance to have an opportunity to sit in on the previous meetings or are coming in new tonight for the project. We're located in the St. Croix Business Park and the location is Willis Miller Drive and Tower Road in the south. We're proposing to construct a 2,300 square foot office warehouse facility. It is primarily comprised of a combination of three companies that I represent, being J and L Steel Rectors, Ascent Contracting, and the Ascent Group. In combination with those companies, we provide structural steel erection for primarily bridge work in the Wisconsin, Minnesota, and North Dakota area. And our contracting operation is connected with our real estate operation and we provide commercial construction as well as project management and leasing services. So, we're using this facility as our main office and it's pretty small, but we'll be taking a fractional amount of the building for our operation and operating our business out of there. And the balance of the building will be available for lease for prospective tenants either from the area or hopefully being able to draw a few of our connections from across the river into the Hudson area for their business operations. To probably give you the quickest blush look at the project from an exterior standpoint, this rendering generally illustrates what we're going to be having on the outside of the building. The building is actually a little longer. We did this prior to finalizing the building site, but the schematic of the entrances, the facade, the glass, the masonry construction is very typical of what's going to happen for the balance of the building. So, it's going to be more or less this facade just stretched out a little bit larger. So, we're hoping to do a nice job with both the front of the building and the visible sides. And we've proposed decorative and colored masonry along the backside and decorative masonry, colored glass, and an exterior insulation finish system from the glass up to the parapet height. There'll be accent with colored and decorative masonry columns in between along with some kind of a steel entrance canopy area to highlight the entrances. From a site plan arrangement, we've, the building is here, we've provided for parking for the codes, we've done our parking calculations. We've also generated a landscape plan that's consistent with the local ordinances in the park as well as the city ordinance and are complying there. The building will have loading docks at the rear which will allow truck traffic to back up to dock conditions. We'll also have various points where we can get into the building in a drive-in door condition for light duty tailgate type loading for One of the additional requirements from the previous one, pardon me while I find the was to create a general lighting plan. And what we've done is we've proposed to put decorative downlights on the front of the building that are mounted up generally high to help illuminate the sidewalk for pedestrian traffic in the evening. The canopies will also have some downlights in them to illuminate the entrances. And then out in the parking lot, we have four light pole locations that are indicated on your plans to make sure that we adequately light the parking lot. And we've put those poles at the outside of the perimeter of the lot and used cutoff type fixtures so that we're lighting to the inboard side of the lot and not pushing light out into any of the surrounding areas, including the residential area to the south. So, we've specifically selected fixtures that light down and are cutoff in nature not to create any light pollution off our property. As far as signage goes, which is another general topic of discussion, we've proposed we've proposed to construct a general monument sign parallel to the road which would be constructed with the St. Croix Park, the St. Croix Business Park specifications which would identify the tenants that were involved in the building. And then we just have some typical traffic control signage, a shipping entrance signage in order to route the truck traffic into the north entrance as we have kind of a one-way loop situation from north to south. And we've also indicated no parking fire lane signs along the narrow corridors up here to make sure that we don't incur any parking.
Man, I inquire, why would you want a parallel sign in the middle of your building where wouldn't you want something on either end of the building to introduce that you're coming into your property or something? I guess I just find the visibility of your sign is you can't see it until you're on it. And I'm not saying it critically, but I guess I'm questioning what you're doing.
Well, I do appreciate the question. Actually, we struggled with that a little bit. The park specifications actually indicate that the sign shall be parallel to the street rather than perpendicular. We would prefer to have it perpendicular and locate it near one of the primary entrances. Here, it's a toss-up whether traffic will come from the north or possibly come from the south. And in spirit of trying to follow the guidelines, we decided to locate it here saying that, well, people know where they're going, they're going to hit the entrance once they've been to the building. But if they don't, if they're coming from the north, they'll have a chance to read the sign and turn into the south entrance. And if they're coming from the south, they'll have a chance to read the sign and turn into the north entrance.
Is that the rules on that, that they have to be perpendicular?
By covenant, yes. I mean, it's
I do know that.
Business parks can be receptive both ways.
Yeah, and we will
But you bring up a very good point, especially with the geographical location of that particular building.
Yes.
It's way back in the
Well, it's offset and it's not, you know, right up front and you could even make the turn and drive in there and you still wouldn't know what you're looking at.
Why don't we leave that up to staff and I think
I guess we would plan on submitting the final sign, plan, and location as required for the additional
We can basically approve that.
Okay. The other thing was is we do have some underground utilities that we had to contend within the area. We didn't want to, obviously didn't want to interfere with locations over the top of those, so.
Any questions so far?
Does the landscaping plan meet our requirement, Danny?
There's an overstory, I'm not quite sure how they, I think there's short four overstory trees, but Jim and I can maybe, Jim is addressing that somehow.
I could maybe address that, thank you. When I read through the ordinance, I noticed there was a provision for credits for trees that were adjacent to your property line within forty feet of your property line. And on the very north side of our property, you know, just, excuse me, just on the adjoining property, there are four existing probably one and a half to two-inch maple trees right there. So, with my client's best interest in mind, I subtracted four from the twenty-five trees that by the ordinance is required.
I'll take it, you know, it's not a significant
That's not huge, but I mean
Significant issue for tonight, so we can work on that.
No questions?
I think it's a fine-looking building, I do too. I think it'll certainly add some potential business prospects to the area.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just wanted to interject. I need two motions, one by planning commission and vote, and council vote. Also, I would suggest that we add the administrative review for the signage and also for the landscaping.
Included in your motion.
That includes no paving without approval from any engineer coming in.
Any other comments to that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Second.
Discussion, hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried.
Good luck, Danny.
Thank you for
Thank you both for hearing us out.
For business park.
Second order of business is a review of the Carmichael Road corridor from I-94 to Vine Street, UU. Issues to be reviewed include traffic access management, wastewater treatment plant capacity, water sanitary sewer front system, stormwater front system, land use, and others that may be identified during the meeting.
First issue I would like to take up tonight is traffic and traffic access management. Mr. Shelley Johnson from Bonestrews here tonight. In the last November, the planning commission initiated looking at this corridor and particularly the traffic management along the corridor if areas beyond north of the golf course and up to Vine Street or from I-94 up to Vine Street on the east side are ultimately brought into the city of Hudson. Then downtown issues came a priority to put that on hold with the petition for annexation by the two property owners on the northeast quadrant of Carmichael Road and I-94. Brought back the issue of how may the Carmichael corridor develop it if those properties are brought into the city of Hudson. Welcome opportunity to identify issues, discuss the issues tonight, whatever issues that need to be further investigated. And I'll be bringing some of those up in a few minutes. We'll take a look at. First issue I would like to discuss is traffic, the traffic access management plan that was, it's only a draft at this point. It's never been officially adopted by the planning commission or recommended to the common council. But the staff has been using it in discussions with developers. And Shelley, if you'd like to take the lead on that discussion, I appreciate it very much.
Everybody have a copy.
Thanks, Danny. The draft plan is that, simply that is the draft, review and discussion. Basically, what I want you to remember is that what we're looking at is full movement access on the corridor from Cooley up to Vine. We want to make sure that we set access points that will allow future volumes to function better than if we just put full movement access whenever someone comes in and wants it. So, what we've done is lay out a system of full access that has approximately quarter to thirteen hundred mile spacing, a quarter mile, thirteen hundred feet, et cetera. And that's where we say full access should be granted. This provides an access directly opposite the golf course access. That's the first one, north of Cooley, which is right here. The second one sits north of Deer Haven Drive, and then the last one, about thirteen hundred feet north of that. So, what we're looking at is three locations where any development can gather, can be granted access. We do show on the plan some frontage road concepts. Don't get too tied up in that. That's just put in there in case you get a lot of commercial development here. If you do that, then you're going to have to start with the frontage roads. If you get an area in here in the middle, middle of this big donut, that becomes through residential, then you don't need frontage roads. Put an access in and they develop their roadway system for the residential development. So, the frontage roads go away. But we decided to show them just in case you ended up with a whole lot of commercial here. So, don't get too concerned with the frontage roads. What we'd like you to be most concerned with is the concept of three full movement access points between Cooley and Vine Street. That's basically what we're looking at, what we've been trying to promote with, what Danny's been trying to promote, the new development that expresses an interest. We have had numerous discussions on the property on the quadrant of 494, of 94 and Carmichael on the northeast. And we think we have pretty much agreement that they can live with that access as being the full movement. So, I mean, that's not a sign and seal thing, but we're pretty sure we're headed that way. We have received a draft traffic study of that property and what they had proposed to develop at that time. We made some suggestions of more information that we wanted to be in the study, and they said they would do that. As of yet, we haven't received that divided traffic. We can't comment on any changes they have made. The final thing I want you to consider is that at some point in time, this is going to have to be a four-lane divided roadway all the way up to Vine. There's no question about that. I think the city has long thought that. We're probably at about thirteen thousand cars a day just north of the freeway now, and not as much as you get in the north end. But once you reach fifteen to nineteen thousand cars a day, you better start preparing to widen that roadway and improve it in some way. There's two ways you can consider doing that. You can do a three-lane section, which is center turn lane into three lanes and then some right turn lanes. That'll carry twenty, twenty-one thousand cars a day. As long as we control the access of four-lane roadway, which carries with turn lanes, we can carry thirty-four, thirty-five thousand cars a day relatively well. But if, as this corridor develops, this roadway is probably going to have to be improved. I don't think that that's a big surprise anyway. So, that's basically what this plan is looking at and what we're asking you to review. That's all I have to say. And I'll answer any questions I can.
Questions and comments?
Shelley, first question, the northeast quadrant there of the interchange with I-94. You have received draft estimates of the traffic count?
Just peak hours. We did ask for some daily numbers also in the revisions, which we'll receive someday, I'm sure.
What were those numbers?
The peak hours?
Yes.
Oh, I'd have to look at the report.
Well, we have twelve thousand eight hundred there right now, and it's average, not peak. And at one point, when Opus was here, there was discussion that they wanted a stoplight. I assume that would be at the first or second access point, either quarter mile or half mile. What's your thought on that?
Right here.
Yeah.
If this development occurs, the last proposal we saw, and the access is there, trust me, you better have a signal operating on opening day.
If I may hog for just a second, one more follow-up question. You are talking about creating a four-lane out of Carmichael, which will lead to the south to Cooley and to the north to Vine. Now, we can expand Carmichael. We can't expand Cooley or Vine. What happens to the traffic on those streets? What happens to the congestion situation?
Based on whatever growth you have there, and we don't know what your future numbers are, because your old comprehensive plan probably has to be updated to effectuate all the new development that's occurred to the north, because that's getting larger. We're seeing more vehicles coming from the north on Carmichael. I was out there this afternoon and I was surprised that that number seems to be getting bigger. So, we don't know what the future volumes are on Vine. What's going to happen is that it's going to get full, and people are going to find other ways.
Let me expand on that then. If you've only gone so far as to Vine, have you looked at the implications beyond that? In other words, if you get four lanes, it has to affect, you know, Carmichael as it keeps going north. It has to affect Vine. It has to affect Carmichael below the bridge. And I mean, it would really be nice to know what those implications were.
And in order to do that, we'd have to sit down and take a look at what the uses are today and what the planned land uses are, so that we can project some daily numbers at least out twenty years.
So, doesn't that mean
We don't know what that is. No, we haven't looked above Vine at this point in time.
So, that kind of means that we would have to scale down any development in here so that the other roadways could be able to handle it?
What happens is as development comes in, you should be asking for a traffic study.
There is a traffic analysis that's being worked on. Now, part of that, Shelley, was an analysis of south of I-94, correct?
That's correct.
So, that portion's being worked on. What's not being addressed at this point is the Cooley Road and Vine Street impact. Those are not being analyzed at this time.
The study that was done for this northeast quad, we asked them to go all the way down the rescue, analyzing that and moving all the way up to Vine. We want an analysis of the whole corridor.
I think what Scott's saying though, as soon as you hit the end of Carmichael there, that's going to be the biggest problem.
That whole intersection is going to have to be looked at. And, you know, in the next couple, three years, I would imagine, or sooner, however you desire, it should be.
It seems to me you want to take the four-lane road all the way to almost the middle school there.
We have, we do have the right way to do
We have the right way to do that. I don't see why we can't do the same with Vine Street. It's a three-lane there now. Why we can't at least make it that?
As far as
Well, you can do that for half a mile and then you're stuck.
Yeah, but you have to look at that another way. If it works on that corridor and then it doesn't work on all the other roads, what have you created?
You just created a big
You should be able to expand Vine Street in that corridor too.
You're only going to get as far as just past
To the Y.
Part of the high school.
Well, as far as the YMCA.
Well, then what do you do?
You can't do anything past
Well, the state of Minnesota had exactly the situation several years ago, and they got dubbed lemming lanes because it's where everybody jammed in and stopped.
Rather than argue about the unknown, why don't we record the questions and what's necessary to get the answers so that in our next meeting, we'll have a better flow and a better approach to all of this.
I do have a
Yeah, that was part of the purpose, identify the issues, and we can work on the issues, so.
So, I have a question, you know, I keep bringing this up, Exit 1A by the old Hardy store or the Conference of Communication. What kind of relief could that give us up on Carmichael? We could probably, you know, just make guessing a pretty good number of cars filter away from that intersection. And what helped
I think
It would help, no question.
Big time. And I think it would help downtown also.
Danny's looked at some alternative ways of making that happen, but we've got to sit down and we've got to have long drawn-out talks with WISDOT.
Absolutely.
And we've got to have them look at this whole concept.
Two weeks ago, I had a meeting with the WISDOT staff, and I brought that issue up and said that we would like to have further, more detailed discussions with them. One is ongoing discussions that we're having at north of, north part of Carmichael, or just north of Carmichael on I-94, exit, old exit two, maybe where that can be restored or not. I did have some concerns about that, but they were willing to discuss it with us. So, I, you know, that is an identified issue that I've put before them, so.
Very good suggestion.
But your point is interesting on this area. That ramp coming from the west and getting off at Carmichael, that's got about fourteen thousand cars a day on it. The other ramps, these are about eight thousand going the other direction, about six coming off to the east, about six going. So, that is the heaviest move. That's the heaviest ramp.
So, if we get five thousand or six thousand going off the other one?
Well, we have to make sure we accommodate
Sure.
I think that Els saying that a lot of commuter traffic would never get to
Intersection of Carmichael, they'd go around the other way.
Correct.
Go south to the Y in that area.
And one of the issues that's brought up to me by WISDOT staff, they thought people would use that and turn left and actually go back to exit two versus going south. Now, and then that may be even creating some congestion from that standpoint. One of our discussion was, well, could you make it a right-out only? Not have to be identified on freeway system. But, I mean, these are all things that could be discussed. But I did have a conver, very recent conversations with the state on that issue, so.
I had a question about, the way you have it drawn here, you're using frontage roads. In the Banterra development, we've got a nice development that's laid out with small stores that doesn't use the, I don't know, call the old Woodbury Lakes or mall kind of approach. Have you looked at laying this out with a different type of development that will allow us to not use frontage roads and create this kind of retail strip mall feel?
Yes, that's why I ask you, don't pay a whole lot of attention to those frontage roads, because whatever type of development happens there, it's going to change. It doesn't mean we have to have frontage roads. It could be done other ways. But I just wanted to show was, we have to have a way to connect these access points. So, people that don't have, that just want to drive a half a mile, don't have to be on Carmichael. There will be other ways for them to do it. And that's, that type of thing is involved as development comes in.
Good concern, but if we did it like Banterra, that would probably satisfy your particular and all of ours.
If I could say, I like this concept with the front roads regardless of what kind of development goes in here. I think it will alleviate a lot of the stress on Carmichael Road. But the question I had was the first intersection north of 94, the proposed intersection by the golf course and Culvers there. Obviously, if this development or any development takes place there, makes sense to have there. But I'm concerned about the entrance into the golf course in Culvers. Is there a way to connect this traffic from behind Target, Culvers there, to that? Or is that just, there's no way to make that happen?
Well, there is a way, but some dramatic things would have to change in that area. And basically, golf course would have to be utilized to create a frontage road behind the buildings like Target. And I'm not saying, you know, something's going to happen. I'm just saying that
Where the traffic
Shelley and I have talked about that issue, if that could ever be a possibility. Chad McDonald's here, he's got, you know, he's got a concern. One of the things Shelley and I've been very concerned about from the time that, you know, these discussions have started is, are those two access points on the west side of Carmichael into the existing development? Because they will be affected by development that will occur. And how we address those issues is something Shelley and I have had some lengthy conversations about.
I think on one hand, Culvers would probably love that. On the other hand, it'll probably see a lot of people maybe cut through their parking lot.
Well, and that's what we want
That's probably one thing they wouldn't like.
That's what we want, try to avoid.
Right.
Want to avoid what we have at Walmart and
Right.
Yeah, we'd love to take Cooley and realign it over to the source access. We love it there, but there seems to be a few things in the way.
Anyone else?
Because we want to eliminate that light, correct?
That's correct. If we could relocate Cooley, we'd get rid of the signal.
Because otherwise, we're going to end up with the same mess we got on the south side.
Well, it'll operate, this signal of Cooley, if this development occurs, this frontage road does not come into this intersection anymore. So, it does help this intersection a little bit.
But we still got Cooley coming in and going north.
True.
Anything else on traffic?
Well, there's this letter from Wisconsin Credit Union. I just want to make sure we got a copy. It was submitted today, so I left it. Basically, they purchase a lot along Carmichael Road up on the north side of Deer Haven, on the east side of Carmichael. And they're expressing concern that, you know, we take a look as we advance concepts and plans for that area near Deer Haven, that their property's taken in consideration. Certainly that will be done. And Mr. Chad, pardon?
Brandon.
Brandon, I'm sorry. Do you want to make any comments?
Well, he kind of addressed what our concern is, but just along that, right now, we've got a left-hand turn coming north into 131 Carmichael, which is Carmichael Center. There's a lot of business. You know, what was addressed was new business that's going to be here, but you didn't address how you're going to handle the existing buildings. but you didn't address how you're going to handle the existing building, the business, the traffic flow that are there. Essentially, with what you're talking about with the stoplight there, our position is that we still need to have some sort of a left entrance into the existing, um, drive now. Because otherwise, yeah, without redoing the golf course or whatnot, essentially, you're gonna either have to come through Target parking lot to get to both our building and the building where Caribou is, or you're gonna have to go through Culvers, which would be awful. There's no space there. So we're really concerned about how that's gonna progress. There's not a lot of room there, is what it comes down to.
Well, that's the reason for this initial meeting. Make sure that we have-
We just wanna make sure that that was represented in voice, that something to consider, that we're talking about all this new development, but there's already a lot of business there. There's also an empty lot there that potentially here, you know.
We certainly have to take that into consideration. Do we wanna move into the next subject?
Just a quick question on, you mentioned, Shelley, that you had done some sort of survey of, I take it, property owners on the east side of Carmichael, that, uh, most of them are indicating that that first access point is, where, is acceptable. The first access point north, whereas you're gonna take the old, the existing frontage road out, which is where most of these people get out.
Oh, where that, where-
A fair bit of-
Where that's coming from is the direction by the Wisconsin DOT and city staff, that's where that first access will be.
Well, I assume that there's, that that's a big part of this. Uh, I know folks living over on the other side and they're concerned about driving out of their development and then somehow having to sneak their way through a, a big box development is a significant concern. And you mentioned that you had talked to folks, so I'm curious, how far to the east did you go?
No, I didn't talk to anybody. I didn't, I hope I didn't say-
I thought you indicated that you had consensus that that wasn't acceptable.
We, when, when this proposed development, when the Northern Squad came in, we had discussions with them about how to get to here.
The developers only, Bob.
They initially wanted to come out right here.
I had the same phone calls you did.
We wanted to, we wanted to-
Not wanting to go through a parking, uh, space to get out of their, uh, their homes.
Well, essentially, a year ago, Walmart looked at this site and they submitted a traffic analysis. DOT came to us in concern that if that very first frontage, north frontage road directly across from Cooley was not eliminated, exit two would fail. So the premise that we're looking at, a development on that east side to allow traffic to not cause exit two to fail is to move that, that first, uh, first full access to thirteen hundred feet, otherwise, that's the premise we're working on. Now, we didn't go out and-
And that was the same thing as you have at Carmichael and Crestview, that you allowed that at Cooley.
How do we then approach this whole scope of thing with looking at the implications for Vine, you know, east and west? Carmichael, north of Vine, Carmichael, south of the bridge. I mean, I think we have to take it all into, all into review and concept. Otherwise, uh, we're creating something that's making something else fail. I mean, that's as simple as that.
Well, it's just like the wastewater treatment plant, some of these are analysis that we need to complete. Uh, you know, we cut, you know, you direct me to go back to Bonestrew and have them submit a cost estimate and doing analysis on those two roads and, and so we can bring back recommendations to you. Wastewater treatment plant's very similar. We need to really make some investment to determine why did it cost us to expand the wastewater treatment plant up to our current permit capacity.
Well, I think we have to do that, we're all questioned.
We may, we may get to that towards the end of our discussion.
Okay. Do, uh, traffic studies include an estimate of traffic generated by different types of development along there?
As best we can identify the projected development, correct?
I mean, I have personally a real question about, I'm proud of retail expansion in that area. And, uh, you know, we're sitting here building four-lane highways and doing this and doing that. And I think one of our key questions we ought to answer is exactly what we want along there, has a big impact on our discussion.
Well, yeah, we're not trying to jump, you know, our, our comments of, of going to four-lane, I mean, if, if there's no development along Carmichael Road, then we don't have a lot of issues and, you know, all the issues go away. But as we take a look, even, you know, even if it's only partially commercial, your traffic counts are gonna go up substantially. And regardless, you're still gonna have continued development northeast of City of Hudson is gonna use, why is that, that traffic route also, so.
What I would like to see in the traffic study are the volumes generated by different types of business development.
Well, we can give those, those are identified in the numbers, so.
We're not gonna build anything till we have the facts.
I understand.
I think a lot of people are jumping to conclusion that this is gonna be fully developed. I mean, we, our findings may be after we do this analysis, it's not, that's not something we wanna do, so let's not jump to those conclusions yet.
No, and I don't think you are. You're just putting forth your concerns and you want answers to some of the questions we've developed there, which is a sensible approach. Let's go to wastewater-
Could I ask one more question? On the government, the county was here explaining their development concept on that corner. Will that be included in the traffic study also?
Yes, it will.
Okay, that's what I-
Doesn't seem to be much activity in that particular corner of plate. Wastewater treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant capacity.
Well, I provide you a review, essentially, our current plant that has a capacity of two point two million gallons per day. We have permit capabilities to increase the capacity up to two point six million gallons a day. So that additional four hundred thousand gallons per day that we can build within our current permit is sufficient to handle this entire corridor and in some areas on the south side. Now, to get to those numbers, I've included, or tried to project out numbers for the entire incorporated area of City of Hudson. Deducted, if all that would, would fill up, including the dog track, we'd have about, we'd be just a little less than, you know, fifty thousand gallons shorter than two point two. So we could have a, you know, we could have available capacity of about four hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day. And one of the questions I ask of our engineers when we discuss this recently was how close do we wanna get to two point six million gallons a day in projected use? And, you know, the engineers are a little bit cautious about answering that question, uh, for whatever reason. But there, if, if we expand the plant by two point two million, or up from two point two to two point six million gallons a day, we can handle the projected, even if it's all commercial. We take our highest projection per acre, which is twelve hundred gallons a day, projecting against the two hundred and some acres that's on Carmichael corridor, we would be, you know, two hundred and forty-four gallons a day. So we've got cushion to do that. The question is, what is the cost? What is the implications to the existing wastewater treatment plant? Now, I've asked for a cost estimate to be able to give us a report saying what's necessary to increase the capacity and what's necessary to increase the capacity to two point six million gallons a day. The reason we're wanting to try to stay at two point six million gallons a day within our current capacity, because if we go over that, we'd have to reapply for a new permit. And if, if we do that, then we may, uh, we may have to treat at a greater extent than what our current permit allows us to do. So if we hose the city to try to project what areas we can, can develop with a potential expansion of four hundred thousand gallons a day. Uh, so again, we really need to go back to our engineers, say, give us, um, an estimate for what expanding the, how can we expand the plant by four hundred thousand gallons a day? But also, what does that cost? Because then we can go back and try to project how we would apply that cost back to development and how much it would cost some of these various land uses when they come in and ask for a connection permit, which goes back into our construction fund.
Denny, um, thank you. Your review here is one that you did at the end of March, and I think it might have been done in preparation for possibly for annexation of the school. Uh, since that occurred, what, how does that affect these numbers here?
It's pretty, it'd be pretty minimal.
And that does also include all of the land that is in the city that is not developed at this point? So in other words, all these numbers you're throwing at us are over and above us?
I've essentially thrown the kitchen sink in with those numbers. I mean, I'm talking about every vegan house, you know, I mean, everything I can reasonably project. Uh, it's a very conservative number.
Okay, that's, well, just to clear-
Scott, back to your question, I don't, I don't think there'd be any significant change.
Well, can we put a number to it? You said nominal. What is, what is that, what is nominal?
Twenty thousand gallons a day, maybe, I don't know.
Just wanna figure.
How, how much is the-
I can fine tune that before our next meeting.
I think at the last one, we converted, um, twenty-four homes into eighty-eight homes. How big an impact does that have on it?
Twenty-four homes, eighty-eight. Uh, well, there, you're talking about, you know, family use versus senior housing, where your senior housing probably may, may not be as much. Um, and typically, we use eighty-eight times point eight. So that equals about seventy dwelling units. So you have, then if you have a difference of seventy to twenty-four, you got forty-six times hundred ninety-two, whatever that is, that's what, forty-four thousand?
Forty-six ninety-two.
Worst, nine thousand two hundred gallons. That's a very worst scenario.
Some of the things the engineers have to look at is what would that plant entail going to that? Do we have to take part of the garage? Do we need additional land? You know, questions like that to accommodate that expansion.
Now, then, with going to the four hundred thousand gallons a day, some of our modifications to the plant could be more technological than physical.
Right.
So, again, as far as space, uh, you know, there's been some discussion where this police department wanted to buy the old Associated Bank building. There could be a number of reasons why. One is possible use of it for expansion of wastewater treatment plant. Some could be off-street parking, others could be police, I mean, I'm not saying go buy it, I'm just saying, you know, there could be some things there at that site that could address two or three issues for the city, so.
When will we, do you think we will know the answers to the wastewater?
If I can cut them loose tomorrow, within two weeks.
Okay.
So if I understand what you've done here about this conservative projection, everything that is in the current city limits, developed to the maximum potential?
Be just, be just short of two point two.
Oh, okay. All right. So, so what you're saying then is if you go to the two point six, you get four point five, four hundred and fifty thousand gallons left?
Correct.
Yeah.
And this corridor would use about, probably the maximum, about two hundred and fifty thousand of that.
And that assumes, uh, what, at the dog track?
Well, the dog track is included into two point two.
What kind of development there?
Uh, commercial.
All right, so highest?
Yeah, well, that's, that's our highest, highest volume number that we're projecting into those.
And the dog track itself, if that ever wins, are they gonna generate more than that?
I would be surprised if they would.
Generate or get? Both.
I mean, I'm allocating about a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day just to the dog tracks.
So when you're thinking about it as the dog track or all the hotels that are gonna be dealt around it?
No, just as a commercial, just as a general commercial use.
Any other questions that you have in your mind that we should be checking on wastewater treatment? Or stormwater?
Uh, stormwater, essentially. Stormwater is a little bit of a tailwind city. We have the west side of the corridor, which essentially, a trunk system going from the county property through the Atwood and Gagnon properties to the golf course would be installed, uh, with holding ponds approximately here and here. East side, uh, basically, only a small amount of this area flows this way. Our conversations are focused to date, basically, and we had a, a conversation with the DOT on what's gonna happen if, if, uh, stormwater occurs here, uh, some of it would discharge into the state system. Basically, that's okay as long as they keep it at current rates, uh, as far as discharge. Um, but part of the, part of the right way, if some of this land became available, could possibly be purchased by this owner and then used for stormwater management. So maybe we've had some conversations, uh, but right now, our basic directive has been concerned about how stormwater might go to the town properties and affect the town properties. Our direction to Opus at this point has been, you know, plan on keeping all your stormwater on your site, discharging through the state properties, maybe only under emergency overflow situation. And John, if you wanna comment on that, uh, that's generally been our direct, directing to them as far as looking at how to handle stormwater. Other sides, I guess any development occurs here, you know, we really, because a lot of this was, you know, goes this way, just due to the topography, we'd have to look at, you know, part, part of this land would have to be developed to hold stormwater and discharge only at limited rates. So this side, or the remaining areas, would have to be scrutinized very closely for stormwater management.
Denny, one question regarding, uh, emergency discharge. Is the emergency discharge going to go into the state facility? Is that what you're saying?
Well, that's a possibility. You know, I, we have a, there's some analysis being done by Opus at this time by their own engineers, and we haven't fully analyzed that. And part of it's already been reviewed here, but there's some other land up in this area that needs to be reviewed yet. Um, that would, and that's part of the conversation with the state, what will the state allow?
Well-
And those decisions have been made in final.
If we have an emergency situation like just earlier this evening with a ton of rain coming down, uh, don't we pretty much have to guarantee that there's going to be no stormwater runoff to those houses to the east in the township?
Well, that's, that's what we're trying to address. We're trying to keep, we're trying to keep that water going into the town properties, okay? What, right now, what's being reviewed is trying, you know, under general circumstances, this would be kept interior to their development.
So this is, this is just an unanswered question at this point.
That's great.
Uh, I, I think that we met with the town and met with the city, I'm happy with it. We met with the town, met with the city. Basically, folks are saying that we'd like to design stormwater ponds for a hundred year, back-to-back storm events, that don't discharge, you know, out of ponds. It's great sandy soils, we designed those ponds, calculated infiltration. The ponds aren't designed, but that seems like a reasonable criteria for the, that can be met inside the platform we've got.
What are your other- We're giving them some pretty stringent standards to start from.
Then your other option is to lay a stormwater sewer system that just runs across and all that property just takes all that water away?
And where's it gonna go?
I don't know, that's the question.
It'll all might go to the river or restore it. I mean, it's, it's wet down there here in Hudson, so. But, oh, right now, we've really kind of given them a very conservative, um, standard to live with, you know. Really try to minimize any impact stormwater may have, either to the properties to the east or to the state highway system. So, and there could be an option even maybe having to pump part of that out into some of our artery systems up here, so.
So I didn't know how far up our arteries go, that go down to the river.
Well, uh, part of, part of this would go all down. This comes into the system depending, you know, most of this would percolate into the graneway where it gets to the river, so. So I, you know, again, how do you pay for that impact fees? Are you charging impact fees for, for those truck operators? They would have to be on-site and stuff.
Any other stormwater questions?
If we look at that whole corridor then, right, Danny? I mean, we should be looking beyond just this proposed section. We should be looking at that whole corridor and how they do this.
Well, what, what do you define as the corridor?
Well-
From you, you would dump?
Yeah, all on the west side, because the, the east-
No, we are.
The west side is ours on the east side.
That's what he's doing.
No, we're, yeah, that, our, our stormwater analysis includes both sides. We, we've done that, we've had that analysis. Just tweaking it and updating it, make sure that we're heading in the right direction with what. There's been some changes as far as use on further east and also, uh, some of that water would, would have originally went that way. Now it's not going to, so we need to tweak that, that system. And that's, again, where having to keep some of it on-site becomes a critical issue.
Yeah. Anything else? Let's go to the water utility trunk system. Here, we're in pretty good shape, thanks to some advanced thinking by our water department.
Uh, water, and maybe Tim Cruse or Water Utility Chairman might comment, but, uh, basically, the water, uh, core facilities or trunk facilities is that place. There's a twelve-inch water main that extends the length of Carmichael Road- or trunk facilities is that place, there's a twelve-inch water main that extends the length of Carmichael Road, the core water tower facilities, also there've been water tower facilities on Henry Road that have been made recently, which serves as a backup for pressure on this system. The two things that may, I believe for sure, would be a well at the Carmichael Road, Carmichael Road Water Tower. I guess, Tim, the question is whether water treatment would be included in that or not in the future. Those, where those things would be necessary as part of this corridor improvement. I've got a call on the Steve Haff, he hasn't responded yet.
And that would be part, part of the pilot study, and I know there's a test well right there, came out good. So, if we needed a well there, certainly could put one there.
Where's that at?
Carmichael Road Water Tower. It's across from the county government.
There's been a test well put down there already, and, but even, even if we don't put a well there, I think our capacity at this point in time is, we're in good shape.
Those investments on the south side and east.
That's correct.
Have substantially assisted overall.
We can, we can deliver, I think, plenty of water at this point in time.
Could I ask a question on this, on this point of either Tim or Denny? You do mention an eight-inch connector for water going between Stone Pine and, as Pine and Carmichael, and I'm not trying to parse every sentence here, but is that something that's going to happen no matter what? Or is that only if Carmichael Corridor is developed?
Well, it's most likely, I'll speak for myself and not for the water utility. I, I would think that most likely that will only occur if the development occurs, because otherwise we've got to get easements. It'd be great if we could get it in there, if we can get the easements from the private property owners to allow us to do that. That could be done, you know, before it develops, but most likely it'd be in conjunction with development.
Can that be covered by impact fees even though it does not happen on the property affected?
It could, yes. I mean, our, our whole line for twelve-inch going down Carmichael Road has been done with impact fees.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Prefer to do it that way when the development occurs rather than having to pay for it, otherwise.
Yeah.
Okay, sanitary trunk system.
The sanitary trunk systems, again, currently we have a lift station at the county government center. That's been a temporary system. All in lay, there'd be a trunk, trunk main that goes approximately down, you know, these properties connect into the golf course, comes up here, gets lifted out by, near the Christian Community Center. So everything would tie into that trunk, this area. Basically, there's sanitary across the road, maybe this may need to be lifted into that system, comes in. So sanitary system is pretty well planned, it's not a difficulty issue, just a matter of, you know, where any lift stations would be required. Other than that, of course, you try to use gravity as much as possible, so. But it would replace some of the temporary systems we have in place on the south edge of the golf course extending west. We have a force main that gets it, gets that effluent up to further west along Pine Street.
Further questions? Land use and development.
There's two maps. One's, one's the current land use map. Again, Hudson Golf Course, commercial area on the south and east side, and then Hudson Golf Course, the Atwood Gagnon properties, and Mr. Johnson, basically at Atwood's about one house under approximately thirty acres. There's approximately twenty-five acres. And his general location, church, commercial area north, single, yellow's existing single family, and the gray areas are already undeveloped areas. The current comprehensive plan that the city adopted in nineteen ninety-three, which this process will ultimately update that plan, again, recreational, commercial with the golf course, a commercial, so, you know, you've got the plants here, the other area, commercial, and the support cast, everything else that's left, a single family on the east side except to get up near the intersection of Pine Street and Carmichael, where it's a multiple-family residential on the Atwood property and Gagnon properties, and a single family, again, some multiple-family and commercial. Again, you've got the commercial development, any corner, and this is the park, and this is the county government center. So, the actual projection or designation for land uses the city has for its course is pretty conservative in that a lot of that area, at least up to now, has been designated for a single family. A lot of discussions in regards to, you know, will the city allow this to go further north of commercial? Could this be possibly mixed use of commercial, multiple-family, single-family? Those are things as we proceed, and those will be the decisions we want to make. But as of right now, the direction of the city from our own comprehensive plan is a relative, you know, conservative use of the property on the corridor.
I would just like to make one, oh, I'm sorry, Paul? Just like to make one comment that we have a lot of questions, and to find the answers to some of these questions is apparently going to cost the city some money, engineering studies, whatever. So, I know that I am going to, and I hope that everyone at every step of the way would, would not only ask, how could this be done, but should this be done? If we look again at the results of the survey for the comprehensive plan, which was done just last year, I started making arrows, comments from people who were saying, don't do this, and I just stopped making all the arrows because I was just using a lot of ink. We have a lot of comments from our citizens that are contrary to this kind of development, or, well, I can't say this kind of development because we don't know what kind of development yet. But I just, we have to keep asking ourselves that question all along, should we do this? Not, how do we do this?
So Scott, you were thinking that that's an appropriate use of the quarter from the comprehensive?
Oh, I'm not saying that at all.
Oh, okay.
I'm, no, the comprehensive plan survey, the results were very, very clear that here's the, the number one and two were planning concerns, and to maintain the small community atmosphere, stop growth, maintain that atmosphere. Number four was support local businesses over big-box stores. Number six is don't make this another Woodbury, preventing sprawl, et cetera. And as we think of how we might accomplish this, we need to think of, is this something we should be doing at all? That's my only point.
I want to ask one question to tally along with that, is that you look at all the other development in Hudson, and basically, with the exception of Target being there, it's all been pretty much self, you know, or the other side of ninety-four and all that, and really, when you think this through, we're creating a whole new area that is not consistent with all the other growth that the city has experienced. I'm not saying that that's bad, but, but it's like opening a big door. And so I think we do have to view it with that thought in mind, that that's a huge thing.
Paul, you got a comment?
Well, I was going to say, I think the number one concern of people in the city is high taxes. So I, that should be number one on your list if you look at the comp plan results, that'll be the recurring theme. But I, I looked at that corridor there, and I, I don't see how, how it would be a residential corridor, residential use. In fact, I, I ran for this position, I said I would not look for any residential expansion in the city, residential use, so the annex, and I would not support that at all. But, and I can imagine that people want to have a development on a busy court like that. Some people would live there, but I don't think that's the way, way we go for Hudson. I think if we develop this, this corridor, it should be for commercial use, mixed-use commercial some type.
Other comments?
Well, if we're going to discuss whether we raise or lower taxes, I'd like to see, okay, if this building goes in, it will lower your taxes by two-point-one-two dollars, because I really don't believe that'll occur. That's just my position, because, you know, we've already planned this as residential. There's, I, I agree, we should be looking at it very, very carefully whether or not we should.
I'm sure they'll get you those type of figures, if, if you have so much, so many million-dollar tax base, what that means and, and.
And what it costs us in the long run to continue to support it, too.
Anyone else?
There's lots of studies all on that very subject, when you let big-box people in, and I mean, most of it's been directed towards Walmart, I mean, we all know that. But a lot of, a lot of other cities have studied situations like this, I mean, just to make a comment, and to try to address your answer, nobody can do it specifically, but the cities that have studied it, looked at it, let it in, and reevaluated it after it's happened, has been no net effect or gain or relief for taxes. It's always cost those cities to let those developments in. That is a pretty common thing. No tax relief at all, in fact, added costs.
I'd like to see those studies, I don't, I don't believe that.
They're out there.
I've seen them also. They're, these, these kind of developments are usually a net negative to a city. Also, the call on county services that go along with it for the people who are going to be working there at those commercial establishments.
It'd be nice to see that you have those studies to share with everybody.
Yeah, no.
Other comments?
I, I think if, if we did nothing, we need to look at the traffic on that road. Because right now it's at fourteen thousand with just the people that don't live in Hudson, basically. They're going home in Oregon, Tom Hudson, and Boardman, and wherever they go. That is one thing I think we are going to have to address, what, if it stays the same as it is for the next ten years, we're going to have to address the road.
Absolutely. I think that, any other comments? I think it's important to try and get a handle on the questions that we've developed this evening. And quite frankly, once we pursue these particular questions and maybe a couple of other meetings, then maybe we're at a point where we should decide whether or not we need some professional help. I don't know if that's an approach, but if you start putting this together as a puzzle, you're never going to see the ultimate result, and there's a lot of questions that maybe some professional people can answer, i.e. what the taxes would be, what the traffic flows would be, whether it's multiple zoning, residential and commercial or whatever, but there's a tremendous amount of work that has to be done before we make any final decision on how we're going to proceed, at least the way I see it.
Mr. Denny?
Yeah.
When you're done.
I'm done, so far.
Danny, that particular land on the east side of Carmichael Road is in the township. What if any control we have of that, if we do not annex that property, and the township says, we think it's a good idea to put a development in there? What, what control or input do we have in that kind of situation?
Well, we have extraterritorial zoning authority there, in which we have, you know, it's the Extraterritorial Board. It's made up of three members of town, three members of the city. And they, and any vote that has to go, and their vote or recommendation goes to the common council. That vote, that vote has to pass, so, yeah, it has, goes to the common council, so. If that, if that vote ends up three-three split on territorial lines, it doesn't advance.
I did ask Jeff Johnson to be here this evening, that he said he'd try and be here.
So that is the one, that is the one control issue that we have.
So it would come back to us?
Yes.
Yeah, let's say it was quarter-two, it would still come back to the city council?
But council makes the final decision.
Okay.
Certainly not as much control as what, if it went through our.
Correct.
Process.
If I may regress just for a minute on back to wastewater treatment plant capacity, the general timeline for, for analysis, you know, given a green light to say, yes, we are going to expand capacity, from the time that green light's given to actual construction completions, about a three-year process. Now, that alone tells you if, if we're going to make a decision to do that, that any development along Carmichael Corridor, if we're going to open the doors, has to be phased. It can't just all come in, you know, at one time. We'd have to phase it in some, some form or fashion.
Wouldn't we want to know what those rough costs are anyway? I mean, just as a general rule, and as a, as something we should probably have in your deck of cards anyway?
I, you know, I.
I would think so.
I have monies available in our comprehensive plan fund to go ahead and authorize, if, and I didn't want to authorize it until I discussed with the two bodies tonight, but for two-thousand-two-hundred dollars, we can get those cost estimates in about a two-week period. I would highly suggest that you give me authorization, go ahead and, to do that. Traffic analysis is a little bit different, I got to have money still in our comprehensive plan fund. Basically, what I would want to do at this time, just ask, shall I put together some cost estimates, take a look at the Vine Street Cooley Road impacts, if they, if, I mean, if that's what you want to do?
Yeah.
If that's an issue, get cost estimates for that, and perhaps we can authorize that.
Because the rest of it is irrelevant.
Well, Danny, if, if it's okay that we leapfrog over the plan commission on this, as a council member, I'll move that we authorize you to spend that twenty-two-hundred dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Could I add, wouldn't we also want to know how much it would, the cost would be, wouldn't be our cost, but how much, how much it would cost to turn Carmichael into a four-lane road? As well as maybe part, part of Vine as well?
Would that be part of the traffic study?
No, it's, that's, that's beyond the, the traffic. What I ultimately will need is the traffic analysis on Vine, Cooley, and then the cost of, and it'd probably be a range of costs, shall I correct? Depending on what kind of section we're ultimately wanting to do, but what the cost of from basically the almost north edge of the golf course at the Vine Street, taking that to a four, four-lane section.
It would involve you and I sitting down, Danny, and looking at where are the land uses we need to plug into this analysis? You know, we have to, so, we did that before, years ago, down on Stage Line area. That's the same situation. Plug land uses into all the undeveloped properties within a sphere of influence. Once we have that, we can start generating trips and look at what the impacts are going to be. We'd have to do that. The land use question is paramount in the traffic analysis.
Right, and before we authorize that, I think we need to know what the cost is.
And we can, I can, I can work that up for you, I understand.
We have a motion and a second, let's act on that, if there isn't any further discussion. I did have one pertinent question, not necessarily to this particular motion, but Danny, with the Atwood property not coming into the city, what effect does that have on jumping across to the east?
Well, part of the statutory provisions is that properties to be annexed has to be contiguous, so basically all I'm saying, you're going from, almost totally going south to north on the east side. Other implications is, you know, how much investment are we going to make in infrastructure improvements, not knowing where some, some of these areas may or may not come into the city of Hudson?
It's a reason for my question.
So that's, that's another cost, you know, that's another consideration. Because I mean, either way, you're making an investment, you got to recoup that investment at some point. The city's not going to be holding the bag.
Isn't that part of fair process of evaluation though, too?
That's, that's all those things. I mean, that, as we get the numbers back, you know, we'll start looking at those, those issues. I, I think it might be a little premature at this point to look at them, but, I mean, I, again, staging, you know, what's our, what's our return on investment? I mean, how soon can we possibly get that investment back if we make it? There's a number of things.
One more question about the traffic study. We're talking about Vine Street, you're talking all the way, all the way down Vine Street down to.
Downtown.
Down to downtown, or just up by the high school?
Well, we've been trying to get additional right-of-way where we could, and most of that goes up to about the intersection of.
No, I'm not talking about expanding the street, but if we're talking about impact on the street, I'm interested in my district and how, you know, this kind of development would impact people driving down downtown Vine as well.
Because it's not going to stop there.
Can you, can you answer that, Sean? There was some, a little bit of analysis done previously on.
That's probably the easiest part of it, as we.
Expanding my territory.
Line down toward downtown, because most of that property down is developed. So any growth you're going to have is going to come from this whole area growing, and then some of the regional growth that occurs two and three and four and five miles away. And we usually just attach a percentage annual growth factor to that.
I was just thinking about the number of extra chips that would be generated in and out of downtown because of any development here.
I thought maybe you were talking about the number of stop signs we could put from the high school down.
We'll direct everybody down Diamond Drive, let them go to Stone.
I just want to make sure it's far enough in that study that we're not surprised later.
I agree. I'd give you minimal impact, but.
It's getting bigger.
Well, well, let's get the results.
Let's call, let's call a question on the motion.
I'll do that, as soon as I'm. I'll do that as soon as I'm done with the discussion, okay? Are we done with the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion's carried.
Do we need to get a cost on the expansion of the road as well? I'd like to get that. I mean, that we know how much it costs for wastewater, how much it costs for expansion of the road.
If you like for me to, yeah, put a motion on the floor and we'll...
I'll, I'll move that we get cost estimates on the expansion of Carmichael and/or Vine Street, as you see fit.
This is a city council question, right?
Exactly. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
Don't we need to pay for a traffic study first before we can talk about what, when, where we would be widening the road?
Well, I, I think as Dennis was looking to, we need to, it'd be good to know how much it costs to widen Carmichael.
No, I agree. It's just that how can you tell where you're going to widen the road until you have a traffic study? Because we don't know where the traffic will siphon off, unless you're just automatically assuming the entire corridor from UU on south.
Shall I, what's the, well...
Basically, what I'm assuming, yeah.
Shall I went down, what, well, I mean, you're the, what would you recommend as far as the chicken and egg here?
Well, it's, it's relatively easy to take a look at Carmichael where it's four lanes now and where it four lanes ends, and to give you a preliminary estimate as what it would cost to make it four lanes wide. That's pretty easy to do.
Okay.
The question is, after the traffic study, how far do you go in the opposite directions down this way?
How far are you going Vine? How far are you going here? How far do you go there?
So it may make sense to wait till the traffic study is done to determine how far you go in that estimate.
Well, does it cost anything to get an estimate, Denny? Well, yeah, I think...
If you get the money, first of all.
We, yeah, we have money in our account. But I'd like get cost estimate before we just give it cart launch, yeah.
Absolutely.
But I, I'm hearing, I'm hearing two different things. One is getting a cost estimate for Carmichael Road from the golf course up to Vine, and that may not be a difficult thing to get. The others appears that we'd have to wait till after
Right.
The traffic analysis is done, then we can complete those cost estimates.
Exactly.
Okay, the motion is from the golf course up, making that four-lane or what?
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any, the motion is to spend the money to get that cost estimate?
Yeah.
Do we know how much it's going to cost us to get that cost estimate?
Well, again, I, I, you know, we can ask them to put together a cost estimate and get it back, and we'll, yeah, maybe, I'm going to be gone on October first council meeting, but that's, you know, we could maybe put it, if Shelley can get it back, because maybe we can put that on the October first council meeting.
Would, is that okay with the mover to revise your motion that we ask for a cost estimate on the expansion cost estimate?
That's fine. I'm just, I'm just looking first, a general, if we can figure out how much it's going to cost, then we will know that, and we let the develop, potential developers know how much our wastewater is.
The motion now is to get a cost estimate, right?
Yep.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. May I just?
With the intention of trying to get that back to the council by October first or whatever.
And then we can take, and also, we're going to have to schedule another planning commission, a council meeting, and when Denny gets back, we'll do that.
Okay.
There are representatives in the audience tonight that may, I don't know if they want to make comments or...
Any comments on what we've done this evening and the procedures were taken?
Here to answer questions.
Well, looking at it from your eyes, it's not an easy task to assemble all of this at once. In your opinion, are we moving in the right directions?
Yes, I think we are.
That's the confirmation we were looking for. And we will continue to work with you very closely. Okay?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, do we need to move to adjourn the finding commission meeting also, or?
You can do it in a minute, please.
Okay.
Just want to make sure we're legal.
We're legal, good.